Regular council meeting of September 11th, 2019. Our rise of the pledge plates.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, can we have a moment of silence for that terrible event that happened on Can we also have a moment of silence for Beatrice Greenlee? Okay, can we get the roll call, please?
Mayor Nihus.
Here.
Mr. Magistrally.
Here.
Mr. Sher.
Here.
Ms. Dumsalsky.
Here.
Mr. Hips.
Here.
Ms. Noack.
Here.
Mr. Voitish.
Here.
Mr. Bryan.
Here.
Mr. Wasowski.
Here.
Chief Solgas.
Here.
Chief Bus.
Here.
Mr. Walters is absent, and I am present.
Approval of the minutes, please.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Noack, seconded by Ms. Dumsalsky, for approval of the minutes of the August 28th, 2019, regular council meeting. Any comments, questions, or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address us at this time?
Mayor, could we also take a moment for 9/11?
We did.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
Anyone? Mr. Wigan? Oh, okay.
I got nothing to complain about.
Mayor, MDA was supposed to be here tonight. I don't know if they're running late, so they may show up. They were supposed to present-
Who?
Muscular Dystrophy Association.
Oh, okay.
They were supposed to present a check tonight.
Okay.
They were told 7:30, so they-
When they show up, we will deviate.
Okay.
Okay, reports to municipal officers, the mayor would like to report that I talked to the plaza owner. They're going to be redoing the parking lot, and they're going to be putting up new signage. The new signage at Ledge Road and new signage at the plaza here. Should be done with the new code. Yep, with the new signage code. So we should have things looking a lot better over there at the two plazas. Moving on to Finance Director, Ms. Incrasia.
I've just distributed to everyone June, July, and August 2019, end-of-the-month reconciliations and month-end reports. I would like a motion for acknowledgement of receipt for those three months, if possible.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Magistrally, seconded by Mr. Voitish. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion is adopted.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Wasowski, the engineer.
The Ledge Road reconstruction, CATS construction came and recreated our parking lot, the service department area, cleaned up the area, the old wastewater treatment plant. The only remaining item he has to look at is, since he came about a month ago on some other object, there's been a piece of broken curb along Ledge Road just west of Milford. I don't know if you noticed that?
Yes.
Yeah. And we're not sure how that broke. A garbage truck hit it or what? We don't know. So it may be a dispute over who's responsible for that.
I'm thinking right now, because it started happening right after school started, that it might be the buses.
Buses, yeah.
And it's still breaking up there pretty good.
Yeah. We may have to pay him to fix it. He's not responsible for an accident causing problems. The State Route 8 and Ledge Road traffic signal replacement. Signal service estimate to replace the damaged pole. I don't know if you people realize that the council people- The pole was hit by a lady that apparently had diabetic- It's a, I don't know, she lost control of her car and fell asleep and lost control. And it's going to cost a little over $9,000.
I would just like to let everybody know that we submitted that claim to their current insurance company. So that's already in the process-
Good.
-of being taken care of.
Yeah, it'll take us nine months to get the pole once it's ordered.
Right. The only thing I ask, do you need a copy of the report?
I should have a copy of it, yes.
Okay, because it's all done completely. Rich?
Can we order a couple extra ones so we get our other jobs done quicker?
That's-
We'll keep it in the back.
It's, they're all custom, right? Yes. They're all special. The Houghton Road reconstruction, the State Route 8 traffic signal improvement. I think everybody knows that the road's open. We finished the seeding and topsoil and putting signs up and doing the joints. We sealed all the joints and everything. The traffic signals, of course, probably won't be until December, and I'm optimistic on December. But we'll see. There are horror stories with that. Union metal, you just can't get them. The rain barrel workshop, we're having that on September 18th at the Village Assisted Care Facility, and they've ordered nine rain barrels. Coca-Cola has them at their plant in Twinsburg. We have to go and pick them up. So two of our guys in the service department pick them up at 10 o'clock in the morning that day, deliver them to the nursing home. And then at 6 o'clock, we have to be there to help the people put them together. We need two service department guys who will be there with their tools to help the people, because they don't come all assembled. So they have to assemble the parts. Houghton Road and Waterman Road asphalt milling and resurfacing. The pre-construction meeting with Carvo will be held this Monday at 8:30 at the service department at 199 Ledge. Jason Walters and Chris should attend. I will, of course, be there. And he wants to start basically the last Monday of September, which is almost October 1st, basically. And I hope he does. I hope he starts then. Won't take him very long to do the work, so. That's my report.
Thank you, Mitch. Moving on to Law Director, Mr. Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. All I have to report is the south wall of Village Hall project. We postponed it until after Halloween. We were worried it was going to be a little tight as far as the Halloween party preparations, so they will be starting in November and hopefully completing it pretty quickly. So the contractor was very cooperative in that regard, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to Department Heads. Police Chief, Tranzolgas.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report for this meeting. I will at the next meeting. The only thing I would ask, we would like to get away, get away, we would like to throw away some stuff that we have building up in the garage that we can't use anymore, furniture, old equipment, anything that can't be sold on gov deals or we can't get some type of money out of it, we'd like to just throw away. So I'd like to have someone make a motion. Can? Yeah.
Yeah, and it can be general. It doesn't have to be-
Right, yeah, no, I can do that.
But, yeah, that would be helpful, and we could-
Okay.
Be one more specific with the motion.
Okay. We'll be in there this Friday. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Mr. Bus.
Good evening, Council Mayor. First, thank you for meeting with the architects tonight. It's a lot of information. It's a major project, and, you know, I just want everyone to understand what's going on and always ask questions. If you have questions, you can email Randy. He's very good about getting back, ask questions of me. We've got, finally, a vehicle exhaust system is going in at the fire station, the Magna Grip system. The contractor has 200 orders after ours, so they're very backed up, but it is being installed and should be done by Monday. So that's a good thing. That was primarily funded through the Assistance to Firefighters grant, so we're only paying a few thousand dollars out of a $50,000 project on that. We are training with Macedonia the next two weeks at the Palmer Fire Academy at Tri-C on Tuesdays, both of those weeks. If you guys are off during the day and you're interested to see what we do in those trainings, you're welcome to stop by and see what goes on in the training like that. And behind me tonight, we do have the Muscular Dystrophy Association. On the weekend of the 24th, our firefighters' association was out collecting money. I'm going to have Joe talk for a minute about it, and the MDA here is to, we're here to present the check. The MDA, over the two days, three days, they raised $11,448 for MDA. So I'll give the microphone over to Bob.
We're going to have Bob talk. He prepared a speech.
Yeah, it was a little speech. Good evening, members of council and mayor. My name is Bob Davitt. I'm the current president of the Northfield Village Firefighters Association. I'm not one for big, long, public speeches, so this is going to be real short. As Chief mentioned, over August 23rd through 25th, we had our annual fill-the-boot. This is something we've done in the past and we will continue to do in the future. In 2018, at the end of Day Three, we had tallied a little over 9,000. We really wanted to collect over 10,000, so we added another day and finished just shy of 12,600. This year, at the end of Day Three, our total had come to five Chuck E. Cheese tokens, seven pens, multiple scratch-off lottery tickets, a little bit of Canadian money, pocket lint and gum, also one hubcap. But the most important total was the $11,548 raised here tonight. And with that, I'd like to introduce our local MDA representative, Julie, to come speak just for a quick second about what this money we used for.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Julie, and I'm with the Muscular Dystrophy Association. I cover most of northeast Ohio. The relationship that we have with our fire departments is very near and dear to our hearts. We're celebrating 65 years of the relationship of the telethons with Jerry Lewis and the relationship that we've built over the years between all of our departments and the relationship that we've built. It's really raised over $600 million to date for all the fire departments standing out and really sacrificing themselves on a daily, but then even volunteering more of their time to help families like mine. So both Olivia and Caleb have a neuromuscular disorder, and they've benefited from the funds that have been raised. So you're helping families right in your backyard. Both of them have treatments every 16 weeks, and without the money that has been helped raise here in the community, they couldn't have treatment. There wouldn't be one. So from the bottom of my heart, from a family member, I genuinely thank you. Thank you for having us this evening, and thank you for the continued support that we get from you guys. So, thank you.
Okay. Service billions superintendent, Mr. Walters, will not be here today. He actually got a new puppy, so you guys should stop over his house and see his new puppy.
What kind of puppy?
A bulldog looking, French bulldog.
I just like him, though.
Yeah. It's kind of funny seeing Jason carry this little dog around, but it's quite humorous. But, yeah. Definitely stop over and see his dog. It's a-
What kind of dog is it?
French bulldog. Yeah. Okay, moving on to reports to municipal boards and commissions. Planning Commission, Mr. Hips.
No report this evening.
Mr. Hips, I think in the near future here, we're probably going to have a planning commission meeting, I would hope, maybe next month or something like that. I know we're going to be meeting with the Zembarra Group next week, Rich, myself.
What day is that?
I think it's Wednesday? No, Tuesday. It's Tuesday. It's Tuesday. But I will keep updated on that, Alan.
That's good, thank you.
Recreation Board met. We decided that we are going to keep movie night going. We think we had a really good turnout, you know, considering the rain and everything else. We had about 30 people, so we thought we had a decent turnout, so we're going to do it again next year. We also talked about Halloween, and I got everyone's schedule, which I will be giving to your sister, John, and I'm looking forward to starting that. Yes?
I just wanted to let everybody know also with regards to Halloween, Christmas parties, Easter. First National Bank, with whom we have all of our cash, has offered to donate for whatever event we need. And I know we have a NOPEC-
That's spectacular.
-have a NOPEC donation already, but I'm just making you all aware, if you have more things that, you know, we just need to make a phone call, and they said that they would sponsor or support.
Good enough. Thank you, Trisha.
Empty the vault.
Yeah.
Trish, you want the dates of what we've got so far? For our functions? Sure. You've got Halloween party is the 31st, and that'll be from 6 to 8. We've got Veterans Day is going to be celebrated here at the town hall on the 10th of November at 3 o'clock. And then December, the fire department's Christmas party with Santa is on December 15th from 4 to 5.
All right, I'll let them know.
Thank you.
And that concludes the Recreation Board report. Moving on to reports to the Standing Committees. Mr. Magistrally of Finance.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Dumsalsky of Roads and Public Works.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Mr. Sher of Health and Welfare.
I have a report. It's been a little while since I've had any reports, and bear with me, I'm wearing cheaters today because I sat on my glasses. I had an opportunity to talk to some residents. One in particular, this is a four-part thing. I haven't, you know, I have patients here where I got to explain this. This has to do with health and welfare. I met with a young lady in my ward whose mom is disabled with one lung, and she also lives next door to a couple of nuns who is, one of them is going, elderly nuns, who are, one of them is going to chemotherapy. And then there's a couple on the apartment, on Huntington, this is, her mom is living on the apartments over on Huntington Drive. I don't know when we put the 15-minute parking limit for these individuals, but the lady with the half a lung, she, it's painstaking for her, especially her, because she has half a lung, and she, like, she says, like, when she goes out, let's say she goes to Walmart, she leaves in the morning, she'll go to Walmart. If she parks her vehicle in a parking lot, that's enough exercise for her for the whole day. She won't be able to go out anymore. But when she parks right by her door on Huntington, where her apartment is at, she's able to get out and perhaps go to another grocery store, go shopping somewhere else, and remain active in the community. And I was just praying that maybe council could figure something out. I've been on Huntington before where the cars are parked there, and I patiently wait if I'm going to go into the plaza for something at the dollar store. But I told this young lady that I would mention this at the council meeting, and I'm hoping that, and let me, let me keep going, I have other things that I want to report on, but I want to bring this to everyone's attention so that they, so that maybe we could rectify her situation and them elderly nuns, especially the one with the chemotherapy. And it's like, I don't know, somebody might have been complaining over there on Huntington that the people were parked over there, but it's not like it's, I mean, it's not that much of a thing, but I know the law and us, I think we have a, we do have a say in that. Anyway, the second part of my, my report is, I was talking to a gentleman who lives about 400 feet, 450 feet from Houghton, where he has well water. And he had mentioned that, that since we put Pitlock Park over there, I went over there to check it out myself, since we put Pitlock, we have it around there, that people bring their dogs back there, and there's no cameras watching them, and they leave their, they don't clean them after their dogs. And so what I'm, I just thought I'd bring this up, and whether we put cameras up or what, but he said that when he talked to our engineer and also the Cleveland Water Department, they wanted $1,000 a foot to bring a water line back there. And I did my own research. I understand that resistance through pipes, they'll slow down after a while, but I did talk to an excavator friend, and he says if we would hook him up with a two-inch pipe on the Houghton. And it is a health issue, because of course he feels like the dog-
Mr. Sher?
Yes.
If we were to go with your friend, that'd be a conflict of interest, and we couldn't do that, I'm sorry.
I'm not telling you to put a water line in for this man. What I'm telling, what I'm asking you right now, he has a well water, and he says that the dog waste is leaching into his well, which is an unhealthy situation. And I told him that I'd mentioned it to you, so you could go home and think about this.
Yeah, we do have an ordinance, Mr. Sher, for picking up dog waste, so if somebody's not doing that, they can be cited for that.
Hold on, let me finish.
If he takes pictures-
Do understand that dog waste is a surface water contaminant that the well is a deep-water source, there's large amounts of filtration build into the earth's surface, so this filters through sand-
Excuse me.
...before it gets to the aquifer to recharge it. Also understand that this is a report from a standing committee, which is supposed to be a committee meeting.
This, I'm in health and welfare, and I-
It is to be a committee meeting, which is made up of a group of members from council where things are to be discussed.
This is my report.
But it's not a report from a committee meeting. This is a laundry list that you created to come up here and put in front of the council.
You could call it a laundry list, but the thing about it is, I asked him that I would talk to you guys, and you're not even wanting to cooperate with me on this.
This is not for the floor. This is to be put into the committee meeting, and then you can bring forth a report. That is what the title of the line item is here. So please, bring it into a committee meeting, and we'll convene a meeting similar to what we did for all of the other items. We're not up here talking about all the security cameras.
I appreciate that, Mr. Hips, but this is something dire.
It is not dire.
Yes, he's asked on several occasions.
Committee meeting, and we can deal with it there. So please, get on to the purpose of this, and we'll move forward. Thank you.
So as far as the lady on Huntington Road, you mean to tell me we can't allow a handicapped person to park on Huntington Road? Is that what you're saying? I should have gone to the committee meeting first before I talked to the council about it? I just am giving them a report.
There's nothing to report. You're giving a report of what you've collected off the street on Huntington Road.
I'm asking that's, I'm asking right now, and I'm asking that she would be allowed to park there because of her health situation.
We could have easily had a committee meeting this evening. We could have had a committee meeting this evening, had you communicated to the rest of council you wanted the meeting. That is the purpose of a committee. Please understand that. This is a committee report, not a committee share report.
I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate your input, but see, I'm very sorry that I had-
Something that's germane to this meeting and not go down your path.
I have not even, Mr. Hips, Mr. Hips, I have not reported anything in the last six months because I'm on health and welfare. I'm on health and welfare, and I just find out that there's a lot of issues here in the village.
Right. We can have a committee meeting.
You're saying, schedule a committee meeting of your committee. The committee can deal with the issues in committee and bring back the council.
Okay, then, then let's do that right now. I'd like to call a work session a committee meeting at this point, so we can discuss these people's welfare.
Well, check with your committee and see when they're available to do so.
When you have a committee-
Are you on my committee?
Yes, I am.
Could we have a meeting, please?
You need to look to find out who the people are on your committee.
Yeah.
Just like when I do my work, the one with the police department, the fire department. I ask my committee to get together, so then after we have our committee meeting, that's when I give my report.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So you just need to find out who your committee people are.
Can I bring this up in new business instead?
You need to find out who they are-
Can?
And then talk to them about getting a meeting together amongst the three of you.
Okay. Can I bring it up in new business?
This is not new business. I think what Mr. Hips is saying, that it's a committee report. You could have said, you need to schedule a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Then we would have done it.
Well, then-
And then we would have talked about that, you know, to bring on to the public table here when you're supposed to be talking about the committee meeting that you had.
Okay, I would like very much to have a committee meeting. I'm not real sure who's in my committee besides you.
Your committee is, consists of Mrs. Rennell, Noack, and myself.
You're on my committee, and-
And myself.
And I would love to have a committee meeting with you three, please.
Mrs. Noack, do you have any particular date that you would be interested in having yet?
You're the committee chairman. You tell us what dates work for you, and I could tell you if I can accommodate them.
Okay, prior to our next meeting?
We have a finance committee meeting that night.
Okay. Can we meet here next week, Wednesday?
That is the rain barrel.
Can we be after the rain barrel?
I cannot, next Wednesday.
Okay.
These are my, I'm available Monday and Tuesday of next week.
You are available on Monday and Tuesday next week?
Yes.
How about you, Mr. Magistrally?
That'll work for me.
Which day?
Whichever day you need. Rennell, whatever day you need.
Just tell us.
Either one would be good with me.
Okay, what time?
Let's say 6 o'clock.
On which day? Monday?
Let's say Monday, 6 o'clock.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
6 o'clock Monday.
Are we going to do it here at the chambers?
Yeah, we could do it here.
Okay, and everyone is welcome to come if they would like.
So that's 9:16 at 6 PM, correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is my report. Moving on to Mr. Voitish, a wages and working conditions?
No report, Mayor.
The fire and safety, Mrs. Noack.
No report. I just know that the work session that we had, the chief of the police department is wanting to plan a work session once he gets all the information together for the cameras. And at that time, I will go ahead and let everybody know when that'll be.
Buildings and crowds, Mr. Hips.
No report this evening.
Moving on to legislation, Mr. Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. We have 2019-63, an emergency resolution confirming the mayor-director of Public Safety's appointment of Kathryn Caparossi as a part-time police officer on first reading. Chief Solgas, if you'll tell us something about her.
Kathryn, I'm hoping everybody got my email about her, you know, she's local. She grew up here in Sagamore Hills, was a police explorer there for a couple of years. She moved out briefly to California with her boyfriend at that time, then she moved back here. She comes, she works right now, excuse me, she works right now as a dispatcher for Walton Hills, where she also worked as a police auxiliary there, so she comes highly recommended from, recommended from Chief Dvorsky. The detectives found nothing in her background. Everybody had nothing but good things to say about her. She's a resident now of Stowe, and she would just like to start her career in law enforcement.
Would you like to make a motion to push this on to the second reading? Okay.
We don't need to make a motion.
It's an emergency.
If someone wants to suspend the three reading rule-
So moved.
-you can move forward. Motion by Ms. Noack, is there a second?
Second.
What was that motion for? Suspend the three reading rule. Okay. So seconded by Ms. Dumsalsky, if there's any discussion on that. Mr. Voitish, this is pending, okay. All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Motion for passage, second.
Motion to pass by Ms. Noack, seconded by Ms. Dumsalsky. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Resolution is adopted and that's it for the legislation, Mayor.
Is there any old business, new business, or announcements at this time?
Yes, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank the council for coming together for the work session tonight, for the banners. And I would like to give a special thank you out to the service department in helping me get the necessary information out to the people that I needed the quote for. Without them, I would not have had all the information I needed this evening. So, huge thank you to them.
Jen, I would like to give a shout out to your dad, thoughts and prayers on our speedy recovery.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor.
Adjournment?
Oh, sorry. I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Dumsalsky, seconded by Mr. Magistrally. All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
All opposed? Adjourned at 8:02.